All right. Good evening, everyone. It is time to call on November fourteenth regularly scheduled board meeting to order. Glad to see everyone on this rainy November night. I would like to start with an entertain of motion to approve the agenda. Should have received copies of the agenda sometime this week, so if there is a motion.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved by the day I'll say I'll give it to you in a second.
Exactly.
Okay, we'll give it to Kathy and any discussion on the agenda? See no discussion, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved as printed. I will take us to the minutes. Do you have a copy of the October minutes and these were distributed earlier in the week? I'll entertain a motion for approval of the October minutes.
Oh, we didn't get anything printed out.
Oh, you're right here. Yeah.
Oh, that's great. Thank you much.
Um, I'm moved that we approved.
I don't think you can make that motion.
I can't make the motion?
You you took the minutes, right?
Right, that's why I would move that we approved. I have moved that, but if we don't want to, that's fine.
No, that's fine with me.
Okay. Yeah, um, I I think you can. I've been sometimes when motions come out on committee chairs.
I just seconded.
Okay, it's been moved by Jim White and then seconded by Chris Stovey that we should approve the October minutes. Uh, any discussion? Okay, see no discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
I understand.
Yes, you may. Sorry.
I wasn't here.
An extension.
I wasn't here, so. Like, I don't.
Are you, are you upstate?
Upstate.
Okay. You have extension. Yeah. All right. Thank you. The motion will carry. That will bring us to the treasurer for board. So Kathy, I will turn it over to you.
I move the board to approve the October two thousand twenty-four operating bills totaling four hundred and three thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixteen cents.
Okay, is there a second? All right, it's been moved by Kathy and seconded by Bill Hara that we would approve the October operating bills. Any discussion? It's just.
Like every time I review, if I if I just find something, I don't know what it is. I just wanted to ask, what is E H I M?
It, um, I don't know what it stands for, but it's one of our benefits. It's, uh.
Oh, okay.
Like the F S A.
Oh, it's number, what else?
It's like the eight one forty seven. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, what it is, is people, excuse me. Yep, can put money into a fund and they can then use that money to pay the revenue.
Sure. Okay, got it. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, you've probably answered this before, but what is lean so system? That's our, um, our whole thing that's out. You can pick up the whole books upside.
Oh, oh.
And that's what you did before, Chuck. It's percent. Now, I don't know whether that's the last fifty percent or the first. I had, I think it's the last fifty percent. Then we made it into portion. We had to pay before, yeah, too. Yeah, so that's the last fifty percent.
Any questions on the operating bills? Sorry, who seconded that motion? You do. See no further discussion, all of those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? A motion carries.
I move to receive and file the financial report.
Okay, it's been moved by Kathy, seconded by Renee that we receive, uh, financial reports. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carries. Kathy, do you have any other items for the treasurer's report? Thank you very much. That will take us to the friends of the library and so Stacy, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ernie. So, uh, first of all, I feel like we have lived about ten years since November fifth. But I guess we haven't, so congratulations to the board and to everybody together. Um, in my, in my professional role as a librarian, I get a lot of trade publication things. And one of the things that I take a look at is something called Library Journal. And Library Journal linked to every library and every library kept track of all the the pass and failure rates of mortgages and and various bond issues around the country. Um, Ernie and Kelly, I sent this to you so that you have a link. I don't know if you had seen it. So I have to say that outside of Huntington Woods and Pleasant Ridge, which passed their, um, library services mill journal proposal by seventy, I've got it up here, seventy-seven point nine percent. Um, we were second highest in the state at seventy-two point two percent pass rate, which you've probably seen. Um, and then below us was at Westholme Field with their increase in the mill passing, um, at sixty-four point six percent, I think if I've got the right one. You know, sixty-four percent. So I I have to say I was, I was very pleased. I thought a sixty percent pass rate would be really good and to have seventy-two point two percentage points in favor of the middle was really fantastic. Um, so that was, that was excellent. Um, we spent, as the friends, we had, we had a motion to spend up to twenty thousand dollars for all the the various things that went into this and we spent eighteen thousand, eight hundred, twenty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. So we're under budget as well, which I don't know. I thought that was fantastic. Um, uh, so we have, we have some pretty slim coffers in the friends right now because we've been sending, spending a lot of money on library programs, which we are happy to support. So in terms of replenishing their, those coffers, we will be having fall membership renewal letter that will go out and we're also looking at having a digital only uh, Giving Tuesday campaign as well. So you will probably get something in your email or in the mail. Um, just a a couple of other things. We had a really great, we had a really great October book sale, even though we, um, we didn't have very much traffic in because A, it was a beautiful weekend and we wanted to be inside. B, there was football everywhere. So if you're inside, you're probably watching a game if you were not like actually buying books. So we made about forty-eight hundred and sold just, I think, the second highest indoor sale that we had. We made six thousand in spring. So um, even with the, a lot less foot traffic, we did a really good job. So book sales are doing really well. Um, and I I come before you, uh, to request that any kind of movement that's done on the master plan that the friends get some kind of space. Because, because I also look at the United for Libraries webinars that are done the second Tuesday of every month at two P M. And Kelly has heard this before, but they had Sarasota Springs, New York and Rochester, Minnesota, who are, I don't know if they're equivalents in terms of size or, um, like if we look at class six, what what their state equivalent would be. I'd have to look at that. Um, Rochester made a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in their book sales. Uh, about thirty of that was online sale. Sarah Toby Springs made hundred and twenty-five, of which about thirty-three thousand was online sales. And they have dedicated space to it. They also have a lot of volunteers, so I really have to get it together and get a lot of volunteers. We make the majority of our funds through our friends memberships. We, we took in about roughly seventy-five thousand in twenty twenty-three and seventy thousand in in twenty-two. That was up from the post and pandemic years where word giving was was down quite a bit. Um, based on, you know, various things that were happening in the world and and locally. So we're really looking at, um, having a push to move toward replenishing the fund so that that we can then contribute more to the the library and the programs and and things that are offered. So, um, I think one of the best things that happens when we do this kind of campaign is the word of mouth that comes from it. She and you're talking, you know, before the meeting started about how your H O A wish to have, you know, a no fee structure of the library. And I think that the more you talk about these kind of things, the more people listen and work on on, um, on creating better community kind of things. So one of, one of the things I'm going to be looking for and asking for from you all is to look at this from the point of view of getting as much money out of people's pockets as possible in their friends renewal and, um, pushing toward doing things that that will, um, make funding, uh, pretty solvent for us. And now that we don't have a millage to think about and take up most of the space in our brain about, we can, I can do a little bit more to this kind of thing. So, um, if any staff member is listening, whether in person or online, and we're working on those donations this week, Jackson. And and get it together, but I'm really helping to to fire up, uh, the volunteers and get everything done.
It sounds good.
Any questions?
Good. Off the top of your head, Stacy, I understand if you don't, but do you have any sense of how much you we earn, you earn on book sales, not during the, you know, just during the non-sale times?
Um, if we, if we separate out the sales, it's kind of hard because, you know, things vary. Like in October, um, from the non-big book sale, we made about fourteen fifty. In September, we made sixteen, almost seventeen hundred, right? So we spend at about fifteen hundred, you know, um, sort of an average per month. So if you parse that out, it's, it's probably going to be close to twenty thousand. Um, we can only do as much as we, you know, the donations that we get and what we put out because we don't use any library discards for the most part. There are a few in there, primarily DVDs. But for the most part, the discards are are going to another, you know, separate vendor. Um, and we make about, I I'm hoping to make about a thousand a year through our own donations to Better World Books where we get twenty percent of the net of those sales. So what's really going to increase that is going to be online sales because we do get things of like immense value, really. If you look at it like in the book world, it's, it's kind of astonishing and I'm always very appreciative. So that's why I don't say, yeah, no, don't say no to anything. Just take it because you never know what you can get. And we have a lot of volunteers who are are pressing things online based on like sold items if they can get it. So so I I think if you say, you know, roughly about twenty thousand a year comes from the in-house book sales both here and at Farmington, it would be about it, it's the equivalence if you take in twelve months.
That's with very little merchandise in space, really.
Right, right.
Yeah, so the, these, these other libraries that, um, were discussing their space, um, one had about five hundred square feet and one had about eight hundred square feet. And I thought that that's a lot. Like, I mean, two hundred square feet, how big is the quiet study room if we were to, like, conceptualize how much that is? Is it like like funny under it or something square feet maybe? So if you think about it. Right, yeah. And it's, it's really not a lot and you get a lot of bang for your buck. And some of these places have really done an amazing amount of work, like uh, Rochester figured that they made a dollar twenty-seven on every donation that they got. So they're really keeping like amazing checkered stuff. So if we made a dollar twenty-seven on everything that we sold at the book sales, you know, the big book sales, we could make six to seven thousand, I think. If we did it for everything that we sold during the year, we'd probably go up because we saw some things that are, you know, that like the kids books do really well are a dollar or under, mostly under.
You know that, like, when Redford remodeled, they sent you the pictures of their space and they don't, they don't man their space, but they have like donation based, you know, with the box and then they have this, uh, Q R code if you wanted to do, um, credit card.
Uh, yeah.
So there's, they don't, um, I think they have, I don't even know if they have prices on the books. It's just by, do they? It's just by donation. And a lot of times when you do by donation, you get more than you do if you send this, I have one dollar book and this is, they're going to give you, they would give you five, do you know what I mean?
I've noticed that. I've noticed that the people are willing to say, you know, keep the change, you know, and, you know, give us a ten for a four dollars worth of books.
Right.
That kind of thing. Um, when, we do a lot of reselling to book resellers as well. So we take, like, if there's something that sells for, say, a hundred dollars, then I'll price it at about thirty percent of that, sometimes forty, depending on how greedy I feel that particular day. Um, those things do really, really well at the book sales. In fact, I think it drove uh, a lot of the the income generated from this past fall sale, not so much in the spring because in the spring we're cleaned up. So there's, there's a lot of stuff that that comes through. Um, so, so yeah, uh, the sooner we get that going, the sooner that I can get volunteers to staff it, the happier everybody will be because they look at it, the volunteers look at it as a friend-making opportunity. They are absolutely delightful, you know, it's something that they can do and get involved in. Those stakes, a lot of bang for your buck. And I would like to provide that for the folks in this area because they do a tremendous amount of good for us. Um, there was one missing that I wanted to say. Oh, um, so the book sale was great. The author visit was hilarious and incredible. When I think one of the best that we've had in person. First of all, it smelled amazing because there was a group that works with the Viola shipment, like line to create these amazing smelling candles. So I walked in and I'm like, smells so good in here, doesn't usually. And it was, it was just, it was just, uh, really pretty amazing. So that was great. That was great. Uh, um, and, uh, your friends renewal membership, I think.
Stacy, thank you so much. Um, I can't say enough about what you do, what the friends board, um, continues to do. Um, as I've said to some people, we had the, the benefit of the friends underwriting our entire village campaign and, um, we didn't have to focus on folk fundraising, but I I would like everyone's attention to, um, the membership renewal. And I'll be making an appeal to some of our partners and friends here in town to see if they want to help restore the coffers of the friends um, after they did support, um, the successful village campaign. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, if no further questions for Stacy, um, that will bring us to the director for board.
Okay, so just to piggyback on, I read this to the friends on Tuesday night. So Wade Rouse, who is, writes under the name of Viola shipment, he posted on his Facebook page the next day. Um, thank you to the Farmington Community Library and Friends of the Library for hosting me Monday for one of my favorite author events, an evening with Viola shipment in recent memory. This event had it all, laughter and tears. I guess I need my glasses a little bit. Some two hundred library patrons attended in person with one hundred joining on soon. A book club celebrating its twentieth anniversary with members attending from out of state as well as family members. It's of all ages. College students, Stacy's college students who are told to come. A sweet reader who made me a homemade coffee cake from a beloved family recipe. It is delicious, by the way. Readers falling in love with our Viola Fall gift line. Great questions from the audience. A mic I forgot to take off so the entire room could hear me being a total idiot as I walked around chatting and hugging. He actually wore his portable mic all the way downstairs to the book signing. And there's these sitting up there thinking that we kept hearing this voice and you could hear a chat. Yeah, and one of the biggest glasses of wine in my life with all the incredible librarians who made the night possible. And so we took him up to dinner at Craft Group sooner before. And he's the only one that got a double pour of wine. And I don't know how that. I do not know why he got a double pour of wine. Um, and just another reason I love a library and its patrons and readers. Happy fall and reading. That was very exciting. It was so much fun. So like, yes, so much fun. Um, okay, um, let's see. So did you read my, in my, uh, director's report, did you read about the paranormal investing?
Hi. I, I actually wanted to attend that one, too, because it turned out just like I thought, based on the paper.
So, yeah, so I don't know. I've never seen anything there, but you know, I, I worked there for fifteen years and I never saw any of this.
It didn't achieve.
Do I, right? Yeah, so I, that was fun. I, I had to make sure that, um, uh, we did get a thank you note from Gasher Human Services and it was just thank you so much for hosting such a great work opportunity for our students this summer. It is people and businesses like you that make a positive difference. We look forward to working with you again next summer. And Gasher is, um, they bring students in to do shelving and stuff. They help us out. Um, oh, uh, so staff day was? Monday. It was a great staff day, I have to say. I felt like, um, it was, it was the zing train and I gave you in your packet the, what the zing train was. And I feel like it was very much our philosophy and reinforced our philosophy. And it's a study, starting point to, uh, our philosophy and customer service. Um, it's a starting point to put things into more concrete. So for staff to understand how, you know, what's expected of them for great customer service and and how to handle the five steps from handing, handling somebody actually, you know, complaining or and I feel like those will be guidelines that we can put into place. Um, a couple of takeaways I got was um, from them because I've always wanted to define above and beyond. You know, it's so hard to to define above and beyond and their explanation was so simple. It was something that's unexpected or not asked for.
Yes.
Yeah, and you know, once they said it, I'm like, that is it, that is it, you know, but, um, and the other one is, um, the other one I get one size fits one. So, yeah, I just thought they had some really great examples and I think staff came with it. We got a ton of positive comments about the training and so hopefully somebody got something. They were great. Um, also on staff day, um, our idea task force put some reading and watching suggestions out for staff to more about diversity and stuff like that. So.
Would you mind sharing that with us?
Yeah.
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 I was looking for, um, reading and watching suggestions.
Yep. Well, so this was good. This was handed to everybody on, on staff. Um, want to talk a little bit about, so now that the millage is passed, we do have to, um, talk about the captures, Grand River Corridor and D D A. I don't know if somebody, I don't know if you have questions. If we should talk to the attorney, I don't know if somebody wants to join the phone call with the attorney to understand what kind of parameters we can put in place if you want to put in parameters, like, you know, like, do you want to revisit every two years?
Could you just back up a little bit and tell us a little bit the history of what this is all about, the D D A?
The captures, the tax captures. Because our millage is ending in December, you have to go into a new agreement on the new millage with the cities.
Yeah, and in the past, we hadn't really had agreements with them. And these were kind of just.
Right.
You know, required.
And who makes the decision about how much to put in?
We do. Your board does.
Yeah, so that was in our ballot language.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I'm certainly willing to join, um, for that call.
Okay.
And then maybe we bring it back to the board once we have an understanding of some of the options there.
Right.
With a, a recommendation.
Okay.
And anybody else who's available, I think, uh, if you want to join, just let us know. So you. When you're going to have that call?
No, I haven't scheduled it yet.
Okay.
I would sit in on the call if, if I'm available. So you're just including?
Okay.
Now, if I'm available, I'd love to sit in.
Okay, yeah, I would too if I'm available. Okay.
Okay, but what I wanted to ask is can you describe what those are or should we wait till after the call? What, what are, what those things are that we're capturing from? Oh, the downtown development authority. You know, I understand that, but what are they using our money for?
The options.
Okay, so to that, I work a lot with the D D A. So the D D A has defined space in Harvard. And so like, you know, the ladies' night, all the, um, you know, like, uh, they get that somewhere else. The city did that, but all the little things in like the breeds and the
Thank you.
Education. They do, they, you know, they work with the businesses in that district, um, market the, they market the business.
Building improvements, they subsidize sometimes.
You know, yeah, sometimes they have pop-ups, um.
Signage.
Signage, signage, right. Um, they were instrumental in getting the, the Diamond Park and the new Mason Park that is gonna, um, be in. Um, and they do all those things and they help it. And so us being a part of that is like really important because then anything that like they do, the, if we didn't give them any money, the library could no longer, they could no longer like interact and do because of the money capturing. And we have a really good working relationship with them and have, you know, through a couple of initiatives.
I, I feel like, um.
Funds therapy.
Projects. It's like the business.
It's a test. Everything will stand up for this.
They all capture and it's really, it's minuscule, really. Overall. And I think the benefits of working with them in the community is far more beneficial.
And, and most downtown areas have a tax capture authority. Like I work a lot with the Detroit, the downtown Detroit partnership and that's what that is.
What about the Brownfield? Brownfields we can't touch.
Right, and I was going to say, um, I think, you know, there'll be some dialogue with city management around identifying what they're using those funds for to include in the agreement. Um, but I don't know that we have a lot of wiggle room there. As far as the D D A is concerned, um, to Maria's point, I think we've seen a strong, um, scheduled programming from D D A for some time now. Um, it's just merely more so formalizing, uh, that agreement. And I think probably inspecting the revisiting of the agreement, like, you know, some of the key things we might want to consider, how often, uh, we want to revisit this with them. Are there some particular connection points we want to advocate for, um, in there? Maybe we need a bright new sign downtown that we, we want them to help us with. I don't know. But, um, but, but definitely after the meeting, we'll bring that back to the board, uh, for some further discussion.
I think there are third extension, Grand River Corridor. Well, that's an improvement of the Grand River Corridor.
And so what I will say to that, I think you can see the evidence of prior work on the Grand River Corridor with some of the lampposts and things that have been done there. Um, I think clearly the Grand River Corridor is still in need of, uh, probably some reinvigoration. And so I think that is a place where, because that's on my mind too, where we might have a more opportunity to give some input because there aren't as many things going on there. Like with D D A, they have a really strong program. Uh, so.
How far is that goes down? To Eight Mile?
Well, it's both cities, right?
Right, it is.
It's farming and Farmington Hills, so it's the.
It's our two cities.
It's the entire length of the corridor in Farmington and Farmington Hills. Yeah.
So like as far as target?
Further.
Further, yeah.
Does that go to Eight Mile?
I think it does.
I think it does.
Or middle.
I don't know that there's a lot to do there. I keep wanting to hold it, but no matter what. And the big academies on the other, but when you think about west of that, there's a lot of improvement.
Yep, in town proper kind. So, um, I'm interested really in kind of understanding maybe the city of Farmington Hills and city of Farmington, what their thoughts are on Grand River for sure. Uh, D D A, I think they've got a strong program and the Brownfields kind of Brownfields are designated spaces. They are where they are. I'm going to say they've got to do certain things to maintain those. Uh, but having these agreements gives us more input than we've ever had because I don't think we've ever had any input in this, uh, formally. So, um.
Yeah, so I think our first step is to see what our parameters are from the attorney, what we can do. And then we have to go to the cities and say, here's the agreement, you know, and get information.
So we'll probably make another stop back here to the board, um, after we kind of get the guidance on our parameters and those who can join. And kind of just extend that to the board and those who can join, hop on.
I, I did get some feedback from the community questioning why are funds that we want to go to the library going to these authorities? I I did get some feedback from the community questioning why are funds that we want to go to the library going to these authorities and. Um, I know Ernie and Kelly have done a great job of explaining that to people, so. Appreciate it. There's a lot of questions about that.
Yes, during the village campaign, that was probably one of the top questions. And it was kind of, I think, the first time a lot of voters were even seeing these entities and trying to understand, well, what is that even, right? So I do think we've got an opportunity, maybe through our city managers even, to just flesh out a little bit more public information about what these are and what. Yeah.
Uh, Sally Campbell, celebrating forty years this year with the library. She was a baby when she started.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, no, she was spending, she was library secretary, started at eighteen years old ago. So, yeah, um, yeah. Um, so we had a little thing at staff day, staff day for, uh, it was a little presentation, um, Sally's life through the eyes of the library, because back in the day, it was like. Sally's wedding shower. Sally's a baby shower. Sally's having another baby, let's have another shower. Oh, Sally's having another baby, let's have another shower. So we kind of went through the whole gambit of her life through the eyes of the library. Um, yeah, um. I don't think, so just some upcoming programs, um. We, well, we did have a de-stress fest on election day, which got rave reviews. We had therapy dogs, so somebody could come and pet the dog, therapy and stuff. In coloring, we had hot chocolate. And you could win a chance for tutipies. Got a lot of good comments. Um. So, uh, we have a home buying one-on-one workshop on November fourteenth. Uh, we have a handmade craft series on November seventeenth, uh, making coasters outside filling in old magazines. Uh, we have a senior social hour on November twenty-second from ten thirty to twelve, and this features social time, crafts, music, games, puzzles, coffee and light refreshments. Um, and then we have on November eighteenth, we have a holiday technology buying guide program, just in case somebody's looking to. Upgrade their computer, tablet, or whatever. And on November nineteenth, we have the Ask a Lawyer Clinic of the Oakland County Bar Association. So just some of the programs from November. Um, I did say in the thing that I was gonna include the state aid report in your packet, I did forgot, but. Here's a, I'm not gonna print everyone a copy. I'm gonna send it to you through email if you want to look at it, but if you want to view the state aid report, it is. Done. For this year. And also just a reminder that our December meeting is at Farmington again. So.
I'm momentarily confused. I got my car. Going to Farmington. I had to put a note.
Yes.
This one.
Yep. Uh, that's, I think that's a high one. Any, oh, and then the the interviews for the new board member for Farmington is. The uh, tentatively December second at seven PM, so if anybody's interested, that's what that will be. And that's what they said. Uh, no, the reason they, I think they only have one. At the time that I talked to Melissa, but they opened it back up to see if they could get more, so I don't know that they have more than. If anybody had one.
Uh, any, any questions for Kelly? Thank you very much, Kelly. Uh, unfinished business. I do not believe we have any unfinished business. Um, that will bring us to subcommittee updates. Kathy, do you have anything from the finance committee?
In Michigan class, we earned forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-two cents interest in October. With the year-to-date firm in income of a hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and eighty without two cents. Daily yield on October thirty-first was not uh four point nine three zero zero. And with the Fed changes, the interest rate went up a bit. Which is unusual. And on November twelfth, it was four point nine three six seven. But this is likely to go down. I have obtained Comerica codes to be able to do pin wire transactions. This will allow me to call in transfers from Comerica to Michigan class. Instead of filling out paperwork and taking it to the bank instead of paying. So on November twelfth, I sent five dollars as a test from Comerica. To our Michigan class subaccount at Ciel Milk. I have previously used that five dollars as a test by nine twenty-six to create like transfer money directly online to Michigan class to Comerica. I'm excited to say that the Michigan class online transfer to Comerica and the Comerica pin wire, pin wire. To Michigan class both worked. And these types of transfers are what I'll be using in the future when necessary. And as a reminder, uh, when a transfer is done, Michigan class. Sends a confirmation email to Ernie, Kelly, Kelly from Maran and myself, so everybody knows what's going on. So I'm really excited.
That's really, that's great. That's really important.
Such a timeless saver.
Are you saying you don't like going to the bank?
No, I don't. That takes so long.
Any other items from the finance committee?
Yeah.
Thank you, Kathy. That will bring us to the facilities committee, Sharon. Congratulations again on uh your chair.
Thanks. Let's start probably with the smallest and the easiest first, and that's the rocks. So, uh, so these we discussed several things. One was the discussion we had earlier about. The rocks, putting rocks in the parking lot, clicking on, just uh, just going with that particular look. And the pricing on it was about eleven thousand dollars. So the facilities committee says, let's do it. Let's put some weed preventative down, put the rocks down. And there's quite a few little stations around the entrance and the parking lot that we do. So we all agree that we put a, uh, it was a motion to the board is to approve. An expenditure, and I think uh back then it was eleven thousand dollars, um. And you have that, I think the number that looks around.
Uh, yeah, it's about eleven thousand, six hundred.
Yeah, to go ahead and not to authorize to. Replace the the dirt with some rocks and some weed preventative and see how that that does. It's not a major investment, but. Um, we'll see how it works and a lot of the businesses around here have done the very same thing, so. We can compare notes with them. So do we need a motion for spending money?
No, not for that.
That amount.
I was gonna say, I don't think.
That amount, so.
Fifteen thousand is the.
All right, so we'll just say that we're gonna do that then?
Yeah, and we're.
So there was, that was.
No.
Um, we'll go to number two, which is uh the cleaning, the cleaning issue, and there were uh ten bids out and. Three of them kind of made the top. And number one, Peter has uh recommended the first one, which is our neighbors next door. Um, and and they all have a, you know, a, an array of things to, you know, a cleaning day team, night cleaning. So, um, we have a lot of faith in Peter's um selection and and he's the one that can see the respect of all the different tiers, so. Um, their recommendation is to go with Jan Pro. I think the committee agreed on that and that, um. So that is an a cost of, how do you, a pretty sick cost yearly cost?
Uh.
What do we have to authorize for that?
So monthly, it's ten thousand, uh, ten thousand twenty-eight, uh, annual with an annual cost of a hundred and twenty thousand.
And we're we're able to change them or there's a, their contract is not continual, we could, if we wanted to change auto check Jan Pro.
Uh, it'll be the same thing, like how our current contract is, where you would give thirty-day notice, um, and then termination upon certainty.
So, so that to me is important, because if we find that the representation doesn't equal what what happens in the cleanliness, then. We could get a different contractor. Um, so we recommend that, um. That needs emotional for a contract like that amount. So let's put uh the motion in place that we authorize Peter to contract with uh. Jan Pro. For the early amount of a hundred.
Hundred and twenty, a thousand, three hundred and thirty-six.
Yeah, that's right. So that's the motion on the floor. So we did a second, uh, support in a second.
All right, it's it's been.
Um, everybody in favor of it?
I'll I'll take that part back. Sharon, you you think you're at Children and Family. I'm chairing the meeting here. All right, so there's a motion on the floor and a second to approve uh a cleaning bid with Jan Pro for one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty-six. One hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Um. Is there a second?
Yes, I seconded it.
Seconded it already, okay. Under Sharon's leadership.
I I won't.
So now.
Motion properly made and seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you for doing all this research.
Yes, thank you, Sharon.
It's less money. Less money.
It's less money too. Um, the most, the most complicated to, the last but not least, is the roof. Um, and the roof succinctly, there. There's only one bid that is for the present company that works with us, Royal Roofing. Um, and my question was, why don't we have any others, but nobody else happened to bid? And we could wait for a couple of months and see if other people would come forward, but. That was discussed, but kind of discarded. So there are three prices, the first one hits over a million dollars, and that is to replace the whole roof, grand roof. And the second one is a Duralast roof, which is. At seven hundred and forty-five K. And the third is also a Durala roof, but it's a Duralast roof, but it does a little bit less. It doesn't examine. Uh, and fix things under it before it puts the rocks in the. They cover over it, so it comes in less. It comes in at five sixty, but everyone agreed. That if you're gonna put a new covering on something, you better look at what's underneath it first and make the fixes. Now, I didn't do that very scientifically, but I'm sure Peter would expand a little bit on the difference between the seven fifty and the five eighty. A bit more technical than what I said.
Uh, I mean, actually, you kind of pretty much got it. It's uh, the seven eighty, give or take, is taking the the roofing. Pretty much all the way down to uh like the concrete layer. Um, that's like right before our ceilings as it is. And then it replaces it with this Duralast uh type roof that's. Um. It's like PVC roofing system. It is a lot better than what our current roofing is, which is tar and rocks and all that. Uh, they described it as it would be like a white membrane on top, so it reflects off like the heat and like the sun, so it actually helps on the inside. Um. And since they're taking it all the way down. And then redoing it with the Duralast, you'll know. All the insulation that was wet, moldy, gross is all removed, and we have a nice new roof. Uh, the recovering is just taking down a, let's see, this one says, I think it's a half. Half inch, maybe a little bit more, where you just take away the top layer and then put the Duralast recover is. It would be, it would be better if our roof wasn't in. Such need for repair, because if you pull off a section, you can see we need to go deeper on this kind of.
So we felt that, you know, that just wasn't gonna solve the underlying issue, so, and number one is just. Just too expensive, to be honest, um. And so that's why we recommend that the option number two, which is the seven forty-five K option. And it's called the Duralast roof, is that's kind of the name of option two. So that's what we're recommending. That, Ernie, make a motion.
The 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 number one, the most expensive choice also is not better. It's a, it's replacing. What we have with the same roof we have now with another tar roof and and it would not make any sense to do that.
It's only better in terms of just. It's gonna be up to current standards, while the Duralast is. Current standards and then some plus uh, the manufacturer will have a warranty. Up to twenty years.
You got a question there?
How much?
Hold on, Kathy, I think first I have a question.
Um, Sharon, you said the middle option was seven forty-five, you said seven eighty.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I didn't have the exact number in front of me. It's seven hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
I have a Julian's notes.
Okay, now Kathy.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask.
Okay, all right, perfect. Now Renee.
Question, um. Is our roof profile gonna stay the same according to the master plan that's?
At this building. Yes. And I think.
That's one, that's why this, this. Discussion is only about twelve mile. We haven't, we haven't, we're not talking about doing any work downtown.
Downtown.
Right, and then people should also, privately, you do know, but, um, because we were talking about this at the meeting, that. Anything that's visible now where the roof is not. Completely flat is not going to be. Fixed, you know, I don't mean that. It's not gonna be changed. It, what we're talking about is doing work on flat roof areas, so, um.
We look at our overhangs.
The atriums or?
Right, right, so we looked at, you know, we looked at aerial photo of the building. It's really a little more than half of the roof that that we're talking about. Um, fixing with the Duralast.
We won't be seeing the white either. That's what I was concerned. Can they take a look over the building, but because it's all flat where we're, where it's gonna get fixed, we won't see that.
Yep.
And then in the Farmington building, it's much smaller areas that have to be fixed, so it's definitely not gonna be this much.
Another question, um, just so I can understand the process, um. When the bids were put out there, are there other leasing companies that do this kind of work that just maybe weren't aware that? Looking for business for nights or is this pretty much the only one that does this type of?
No, a lot of them do Duralast, um. When, when Steve first came to us saying. Uh, asking for a scheduled day to go look at the roof, he said there were uh a few. Uh. Roofers that wanted to take a look, but when the day came for doing inspection, only Royal Roofing showed up.
So he suggested, yeah, that was, only one company showed up for the in-person. Is it which, which was required? And he suggested that it might be that. Uh, some firms, when they saw the bid request coming out from an architectural firms and, you know, they'll, that's. Who we want to deal with.
Direct owner.
Yeah, who might not know as much about what we're doing, that it might be too much trouble to deal with an architectural firm.
I will think about this, Jim. I remember when Donald was here, we had an RFP and we require people to come on site, and again, that we had very low.
Yeah.
Response uh there too.
And there was, and yeah, that's interesting, you know, luckily, maybe it's interesting that Royal is the company that already has been. Working on a roof, so. He, he. He he couldn't explain anymore about why other companies did not. Enter the, you know, submit a bit, but he he thought it was good that at at least it's a company that's familiar with their roofs.
He didn't, he didn't say anything um negative about using Royal at all. He just, they're, they've done work on it before. It's a good bid and kind of left it at that.
Right.
And he said you could wait six, you know, three months and try, try again. I think that he said very strongly, they like to work. For an owner, how the, in an owner of the company, like the, like, we have a board, you know, and like they have, you can't just go to one person and say. Just I want to change my idea. Instead, you have this committee kind of attitude and they would just rather work with the one, one owner that it's easier.
Right. Um. Not totally surprised about the 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 low response on the bid, it's just because of some of the response we had. Some big projects. And even in my own life, trying to figure out like how to get people to do certain work around here, um. Uh, you know, sometimes I come up with one bid or maybe one, only one viable contractor, um, so, uh. I totally, uh, totally shocked by that. I think the good news is that we did kind of get the requirements in around, uh. What we were looking for for different materials perhaps, um. And a different approach that might impact us from our utility costs as we go into the future, so I am happy to hear about that. I think, you know, I'm I'm just looking to hear from the committee. It sounds like the committee's recommendation. That we. Forward at this point, I think based on consultation with Peter. That we, that we move forward, that the committee's recommendation.
Um, yes, with the, the middle, the seven forty-five, um. Option. It should have its own name, but it doesn't. It's just a seventy forty-five option.
It's called full Duralast.
It has a name.
Well, yeah, we just, it would be the full Duralast.
And it won't be done until the spring. And it won't be done until the spring.
Uh, yes.
Alright, um.
And then the work would be done in the spring.
Alright, so Sharon, I'm hearing a motion for approval of the full Duralast roofing option at twelve mile. That came in at a cost of seven hundred and forty-five K. Is that right?
Yeah, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
By uh, Sharon and seconded by Chris. Any further discussion on this one? I see none. All those in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, and thank you, Sharon, and to the facilities committee.
Committee.
And to Peter, uh, kind of working through all of these ideas for us. And we'll be revisiting roofing again when we talk about Liberty Street. Uh, anything else from facility, Sharon?
Um, no, but we probably will spend a little, a little more time on the next uh, meeting because now that we have our village pass to look, look at our long-term plan. And uh, there, it's going to be a presentation next by the architect to.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's been a while. It's been, it's all time to, to move forward on it somehow.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Alright, that will bring us to personnel committee. All right, any items from personnel?
No, I'm busy.
Okay, thank you. That will bring us to new business. Do you have any new business? Okay, that will bring us to correspondence. Jim, any correspondence? Alright, public comment. Do we have any public present? Do not. And then that will bring us to trustee comment. So, Chris.
Um, I have two items that I, as a trustee, I'd just like to share with the board. The first is I had a brief meeting with Kelly before this meeting regarding a project that would be in partnership between the library um, the Elks Lodge of Farmington and Farmington Youth Assistance Program, which I understand you're in the board.
I am.
Yes, I wanted to talk to you about that some more, but the act, the project is called Warm Welcome to the Library. And it's uh, takes place at a library. It's an event to introduce young people to the library, to help them secure library cards and to distribute uh, warm winter clothing. If you have any more questions about that, I don't want to take up more time. I'm happy to answer them and I will get together very uh, outside the meeting. Uh, if anybody has a substantive question, I'm happy to answer it, but we don't, we're still looking at the date, if that's a question.
Awesome. I'm glad to hear that, Chris, and I just need to know the date so I can bring coats and whatever else is needed.
We'll be purchasing all new items through a grant that, that Elks Lodge is going to receive a grant of two thousand dollars. So we'll be purchasing snow pants, boots, pants and gloves. They seem to have enough coats. So anyway, we're working with, they will tell us what to buy.
Love it.
They will tell us.
They being.
Farmington. Yeah, yeah.
And so you know, Farmington Assistance Works really closely with um, a semi that what's the name of Hattie's thing? It's community.
The Commonwealth.
No, no, we, that was.
I know.
You, so whatever. She works with the Unhoused and the McKinley and those families. So, yeah, they, they have a false alarm, but maybe.
They do. Yeah, yeah. It's a really good partnership.
So how will they solicit participation?
They have, they already work with families.
Right, that's what.
And the dignity of these families is preserved. You know, they're already working with an agency. We're not going to put out a call for like, who's poor or you know, it's just like everyone's dignity is preserved this way. Yeah, so. And the second thing is, um, I just want to make this announcement and invite anyone to follow up with me. Again, it's an Elks issue that Elks is um, the largest private provider of academic scholarships in the United States. That is, those scholarships are awarded lodge by lodge. We will probably receive about forty applications for scholarships ranging from between three to twenty thousand dollars. Um, you do not have to be an Elk member to read the and score these uh, applications. Um, so if anyone would be interested in doing that, they are automatically scored for um, financial need and they are automatically scored for academic performance. So we read a section and score it on leadership, elements of leadership. So participation in school, work, taking care of your family, being involved in the community, um, and a short essay they write. Um. I, I try to arrange it so that no judge has to read more than five or six. Um, but it, the timing is bad. It's between December sixth and twenty-three. The other side of that is it's super uplifting to read what these young people are submitting and you wouldn't have to read more than five or six. So outside this meeting, if anyone would like to volunteer to be a judge, I could send you the links, the guidelines and links on um, some videos we ask you to watch on implicit bias. Uh, and that's it. Okay. So again, outside the meeting, but thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. I think the more connectivity we have between all of our um, groups, all of our city groups uh, makes her a stronger, makes us a stronger community. So thank you for that. Any other trustee comment? Alright, I don't see any other trustee comment. Um, I do just want to make one comment. Um, you know, I think most of you guys are aware, uh, we did get some feedback around programming here at the library over the last couple of weeks. And the main thing that I want to say about that is, is number one. Um, the board's responsibility really is governance of the library and we leave the day-to-day operations in the, in the hands of the staff. Um. First of all. Um, and secondly, you know, we're living in a time, um, that uh, causes, I think, all of us to have to reach a little bit further, right? To understand each other's perspectives. And so my only ask has been uh, to the staff that we continue to kind of stay focused on what our mission is. Um, and creating community really is uh, what our mission is and moving forward in a positive fashion to do that. And so the staff, uh, you know, they, as always, have been heads down and uh, engaging with various stakeholders around that. And so for anybody that might be listening or watching, the board is aware and engaged uh, and allowing the staff to do that so that our program of work continues to be as representative as it possibly can for the, probably one of the most diverse communities in the nation. Um, and that's going to be that continuous in the improvement cycle that, you know, is always going to be a wheel that we're on. We're always striving for it and we're always striving to improve and do it a little bit better. I just want to put that out there. Thank you all for your support and uh, I'm sure the staff will be reaching to us as we move into twenty twenty-five for further inputs from you and other stakeholders in the community. Right? Um, if there are no other trustee comments, then I think we can consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ernie.